It's from Bev and Shauna.
Tis the season?
No, it's, 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 um, it's Boss Day.
Oh, I know!
It's from Bev and Shauna. Yeah, they're so wonderful to do that. I was so surprised.
Um, is Jenny not here?
No.
She's gone.
Can we get rid of that funky chair?
It's over here.
You got it? I thought it was this one, I took one for the team.
Hey, change it.
I'll call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation today, Deacon John Lescalle is with us from
Here.
And Councilmember LaGaye?
the Anglican Church of the Atonement.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with a proclamation declaring October 25th Make a Difference
Thank you. Please pray with me.
Day in Fountain Hills.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we who are blessed to live in this most magnificent
Whereas serious social problems concern our nation, state, and town, and threaten our
part of your magnificent creation, give you grateful thanks.
future, and whereas connecting with others and working together through volunteer service
We ask that you send down upon those who hold office in this town of Fountain Hills,
can bridge the differences that separate people and help solve serious social problems,
the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully
and whereas we, the American people and the residents of Fountain Hills, have a tradition
serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord.
of philanthropy and volunteerism, and whereas in 2013, three and one-half million people
Amen.
Amen.
cared enough about their communities to volunteer on Make a Difference Day, accomplishing thousands Thank you, Deacon John. I also want to thank you for the first annual pumpkin patch. of projects in hundreds of cities and towns, whereas in our community, nonprofit organizations, schools, businesses, houses of worship, families, neighborhoods, and friends serve together It's going to be at the Anglican Church over the Halloween weekend, right?
Well, actually, it starts Sunday.
to make a difference, and whereas 2014 makes the sixth year for Fountain Hills to demonstrate Starts Sunday.
Runs through, um...
Through the Halloween weekend? Okay, and I know that benefits the food bank and the Boys and Girls Club. that it is the small town with a big heart, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills supports But that's going to be a lot of fun for our kids.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. a vibrant community to enrich the lives of our residents, whereas I, Linda M. Kavanaugh,
Really, for...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have to boast for you now that you gave me a...
mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 25th, 2014, as Yes. Yes. Make a Difference Day in Fountain Hills, and urge all citizens to participate in volunteer Roll call, please, Bev.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey is absent. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
projects as we work together to meet the needs of our neighbors.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Now I have some information about the election. Okay, remember last meeting, I told you to look out for those yellow envelopes, so this is part two. November 4th, 2014 is the general election. It is a mail ballot election for Fountain Hills. No polling places will be provided in Fountain Hills on Election Day. Ballots were mailed on October 9th, 2014 by Maricopa County Elections to all qualified electors registered by the registration deadline, and it came in yellow envelopes for easy recognition. This ballot is not a sample ballot and should be voted and returned for processing and tabulation. Town Hall serves as a ballot replacement center for the November general election for qualified voters to appear in person who wish to replace ballots that have been lost, spoiled, destroyed, or that were not received. Town Hall is located at 16705 East Avenue of the Fountains on the second floor. Voters may return their voted ballots by mail in the sealed, signed, postage prepaid, and pre-addressed affidavit envelope to Maricopa County Recorder's Election Department so that it arrives no later than 7:00 PM on November 4th. However, there is an alternative. Voters may deposit their voted ballots contained in their signed, sealed, postage prepaid, and pre-addressed affidavit envelope in the ballot box located at the Fountain Hills Town Hall during regular business, business hours, Monday to Thursday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and up to 7:00 PM on the Election Day. The affidavit envelope must be signed by the voter. On Election Day, November 4th, 2014, Town Hall will continue to serve as a ballot replacement center on Election Day, and will be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM for qualified electors to appear in person who wish to replace ballots that have been lost, spoiled, destroyed, or that were not received. Town Hall is located at 16705 East Avenue of the Fountains on the second floor. Voters may return their voted ballots by mail in the sealed, signed, postage prepaid, and pre-addressed affidavit envelope to Maricopa County Recorder's Election Department so that it arrives no later than 7:00 PM on November 4th. However, there is an alternative. Voters may deposit their voted ballots contained in their signed, sealed, postage prepaid, and pre-addressed affidavit envelope in the ballot box located at the Fountain Hills Town Hall during regular business, business hours, Monday to Thursday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and up to 7:00 PM on the Election Day. The affidavit envelope must be signed by the voter. On Election Day, November 4th, 2014, Town Hall will continue to serve as a ballot replacement center on Election Day, and will be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM for qualified electors to appear in person who wish to replace ballots that have been lost, spoiled, destroyed, or that were not received. We take any excuses why you don't have a ballot. Questions, call the Maricopa County Elections at 602-506-1511, or the Town Clerk's Office at 480-816-5115. And the only thing I will add to that is that if you haven't gotten your ballot by now, you're probably not going to get it, so you'll need to get it replaced. Come in early, because on election, the last time with the primary, on that last day, we had a huge line from early in the morning till late in the day. So if you don't want a long wait and you haven't gotten your ballot, let us know soon, okay? That'll save us all some time. Now, next is my report. Okay. Gee, my days have been very busy since our last town meeting just two weeks ago. I met with representatives from SRP to get more information about the solar project that the council has decided to look into. They were able to give me very detailed information about the positives and negatives about such a product. They did offer complete assistance with any project we might contemplate to make sure that it will benefit our town. The MAGA Economic Development Committee met last week. I was re-elected to sit as the East Valley Representative along with Scottsdale Mayor Jim Lane. Topics discussed were funding options to increase exporting opportunities, the introduction of the state program called REV AZ, and that information I've passed along to Scott Cooper, our economic development specialist, and a report on a new collaboration effort between businesses and the tourism industry. There was also a presentation on the Arizona-Canada connection with more businesses and Canadian residents moving to our state and the impact on our economy. Ken and I both met with Eric Gudinho, ADOT's new public affairs manager. It was a meet and greet, but also an update on ADOT's changes in philosophy relative to Arizona's economy, growth, vitality, and impact on the business community. I was honored to be one of the featured speakers at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Taiwan-Sister Cities Double Tenth Anniversary, and opening of the Taipei-Taiwan photo exhibit at the state Capitol Museum. Other speakers included my husband, State Representative John Kavanaugh, Secretary of State Ken Bennett, and Scottsdale Mayor Jim Lane, along with Taiwan-Sister Cities Coordinator Lin Ling Lee. I attended the Ninth Annual Arizona Citizens Defense League Luncheon. This organization works closely with the state legislature on Second Amendment rights. The first Greater Phoenix Economic Council Mayor's Meeting was held earlier this week. Discussion centered around the prospect overview of businesses locating to the Metropolitan Avenue and an update on the Velocity Program, which is about bringing STEM to our high schools, and a top-notch engineering program to ASU. I also met with the Director of the Community Partnerships Program, Angela Talbert, and we discussed further enhancements to the program that provides assistance to our economic development specialist, Scott Cooper. I also asked her to get in touch with our two new council-elect members to bring them up to speed on kind of GPEC 101. The other day, I also met Jennifer, the new owner of the bicycle shop in Fountain Hills on Saguaro. Sounds like another great addition to the economic base here in town. The Comfort Inn on Shea had a grand reopening of its remodeled facility. This hotel is an outstanding asset to our town, and now with the remodeling will be a great choice for those people traveling to our area. The remodeling also includes a conference center, which is always a draw for small business groups planning to visit our town, all-new decor, great-looking suites, and a remodeled breakfast room. And the last item, what is it that separates Fountain Hills from all the other cities and towns? It's our generous gift of time, especially when it involves neighbor helping neighbor. And that's what next Saturday, the 25th, is all about. You heard me read the proclamation for Make a Difference Day, so now I'm asking everyone who is able to help, who can give us a few hours that morning to help those less fortunate in our community, please call Heather at Town Hall, and she will get you signed up. No experience is necessary, just a big heart for giving. And for the first 200 people, see, I've got a prop. These are the shirts. First 200 people get a free shirt. So we hope you'll all come down and call us and help. And that is all I have for today. I think that was way enough for two weeks. And now we have call to the public. Do we have anyone, Bev?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then we go on to our consent agenda. We have eight items, and I would like to request a motion to accept the consent agenda as listed.
Mayor, so move.
Second.
Okay, and I need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember LaGaye?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dickey is absent. Mayor six-zero.
Thank you. And our regular agenda item, next is consideration of accepting a sculpt, a sculpture titled Spirit of the Saguaro for public display in Fountain Park at the Joe and Marge Brown Legacy Plaza.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. At the recently named Joe and Marge Brown Legacy Plaza in Fountain Park, included a spot for a future sculpture, sculpture art piece. A public art committee is requesting that the town agree to accept and place on public display a donated stainless steel sculpture in the Fountain Park. You have that in your council, you have a picture that depicts that and the place where it's to be placed in your council packet. Piece was done by Don Kinworthy and being donated by the Brown Family Trust. It's called The Spirit of Saguaro. The piece has a gallery price of $15,000, and the cost to insure it, from our standpoint, is $63.50 annually. It's a staff recommendation to accept the art piece and its placement within the Joe and Marge Brown Legacy Plaza Fountain Park. Be happy to answer any questions, and I know there's representatives here from the association.
I was just wondering, because from, it looks like it's pretty small, you know, the actual size of this? And can maybe Jerry or... One of the Jerries? One of the Jerries?
My name is Jerry Butler, and I'll try to answer that question. I think it's six and a half feet tall.
Oh, okay.
And what we propose to do is to put it on a pedestal in the plaza so that it will appear to be taller. What we're trying to do, because there is some special amenities at the top of the Saguaro, like a butterfly, hummingbird, et cetera, that are reminiscent of what goes on in Arizona, is we'd like to make sure that those are out of reach of those that might like to take them home.
Okay. Any questions, Councilman Brown?
I take pleasure in correcting Jerry Butler. It's a rarity to be able to do that. It's seven foot, four and a half inches tall, plus your 12-inch, so it's eight foot, four and a half inches tall.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or corrections?
Questions or corrections? No? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, then, can I get a motion?
Motion to accept sculpture titled Spirit of the Saguaro for public display in the Joe and Marge Brown Legacy Plaza.
All right, any other council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six-zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is consideration of a special event application and cosponsorship for the Fountain Festival of Arts and Crafts presented by the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce to be November 13th through November 16th, 2014.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, consideration tonight is of a special event application and cosponsorship request for the Fountain Festival of the Arts and Crafts presented by the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, scheduled for November 14th through 16th, 2014. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, consideration tonight is of a special event application and cosponsorship request for the Fountain Festival of the Arts and Crafts presented by the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, scheduled for November 14th through 16th. The, on the Avenue of the Fountains, Saguaro Boulevard and Verdi River Drive. The Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit entity and qualifies for cosponsorship. Road closures will be affected starting on Thursday at around 2:00 to 2:30, through Sunday at 10:00 PM for those roads. The event, that I mentioned earlier, the event will be open to the public 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily of those, those days that are specified. The event will be, will host more than 250 artisans and draws crowds, very large crowds, as we all know, over the course of the three-day event. Chamber of Commerce is requesting support from the town of Fountain Hills, including the use of the public streets, the electrical use, and a limited staff support. Staff recommends approval of special event permit and the cosponsorship. There's representatives from the chamber here if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions? Any questions from council? Councilwoman Hanson?
I just had a question about what time the streets get closed on that Thursday. I know it used to be at 5:00, and now it's changed to 2:00, and I've had a few of the merchants on the avenue express concern that the streets are closing earlier. And just wondered if there could be some sort of a compromise or something with that.
All right, chamber.
Hey, Mayor and council.
Hi.
Jay Schlum, Chair of the Chamber, and Sharon Morgan, also former mayor in charge of the events. I think she can speak to the closing better than I, thanks.
The closing was upped after it was brought back down. Originally, when we started closing the streets earlier, it was at 1:00. That didn't work. Then it went to 2:00. That didn't work. We're compromising on 2:30 so that we can get things in, large items in, before we close it in darkness for the artist to come on, probably at 4:00 or 4:30. It will take us sometimes till 4:00 or 4:30 to get the cars off. Just an example, we can, we can see a car, and you can go into any business, and you can ask if this person is in here with this license plate, and we become deaf and dumb. Because, and we do advertise that we are going to close, we don't do it just on the spur of the moment, it is in the paper, it is in eBlast from the chamber, so there's nothing we spring on them.
And I don't think that was the concern that I was hearing, that they weren't surprised, they were just questioning why it was as early as it was. So that's why I thought we'd at least have an answer for them. Thank you.
I thought that last year, there were at least some signs put out directing people to park, that they could park, because a lot of people who come to the stores don't know that they could park in the back lot for the stores.
There are signs, and there are people who say, but I don't want to go in the back door. My customers don't want to come in the back door. But we do put up signs.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, Councilman Elke?
Thank you. Ken, would you be able to speak to an update on what the workaround is with respect to the median, the fencing, and what, what we're, or where we're at with that?
Well, we had a meeting this week, we're having another one first of the week. We're having weekly meetings to stay on top of this. They're supposed to be energizing for the electricity by the end of this week, first of next week. Once that happens, we'll be, hopefully have to do that. The Thursday of the event, we'll be moving the fence back onto the, onto the curb so that they'll have access to the road and to the, for the booths.
And I understand there was some question as far as marking as well. Is the fence where it's going to be moved onto the curb, is that going to enable the marking to be done?
It's going to be a challenge, but we'll, we'll work through it. They've got, they taped down each one of them, might have to do some of them upside down, but that might be a challenge to, for some of them, but I think it's doable.
And Mayor...
I remember the council, last, the last council meeting gave, gave contractor two extra days, so he's supposed to be done in about a week and a half.
Looks like it might... Mayor, Mayor Morgan, if you could too, I understand that there's going to be a little bit slightly different setup. Could you perhaps speak to that with respect to the food vendors and different things?
Okay.
Could you say how there's going to be some changes there?
It is my understanding that we will not ever, and I say ever, be allowed to be on the, on the grass median. That means that all the food concessionaires are being moved. The food concessionaires that were in the, from the middle on Verdi River West will now be in a food court on Verdi River, not quite as far as Paul, the, the curve, Paul Norden. This will work. This is extra expense for the chamber because there is no electricity out there. I have to bring in generators. Do we have, there is no water hookups out there, so we have to pay to have water. This will work. The concessionaires that are down on the east end of the median, this show, Noon Karanas, will be able to stay where they are. After that, they will be, the food concessionaires will be over on Saguaro backing up to the They've all been told, this is how it is, and this is how it will be. The artists have all been told that they will not be able to be on the median. They have been spoiled for the last 40 years, and now they will have to comply with the rules and regulations that we had for them, but we let them take an inch to a mile. So they're, they've been told, are they going to be unhappy, some of them? Yes, but they can learn to live with it.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I appreciate that update and taking care of the median.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken, do you suppose there's a possibility we could ask the contractor to actually set the north side of the fence into a straight line? One, and I'm getting there, because we might be able to actually hang the signs on the fence the day before, so when they set them up on the grass, the numbers would already be on the fences to where the artists would be staging?
We can ask them.
Don't you think they'll cooperate with us?
I don't know. At the last council meeting, I hope so.
May I comment, may I comment to that, please?
Yes.
The fences are not the links, they're, all those dots that are out on the curb are the lines of the artist, and their numbers go in between. So it won't do us any good to put them on the fence because they, we would have to remeasure everything and find some way of marking those fences, because as you realize, the artists roll in midnight, 1:00, 2:00. Their, their rules are, they must be set up by 9:00. We don't have any regulations for them. They roll in at midnight with no lights, so they know to look on the curb for those dots, so they get their tents in the right places. So we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. It's just going to be a little backbreaking and a little tiring, but we will get there.
Okay. Councilwoman Hanson?
Sharon, what will the, the artists that were on the median side before, you know how so many of them put their, their extra goods, you know, just up on, where will they be able to put?
Okay. The artist's space is 11 wide and 14 feet out from the curb. Most tents are 10 by 10. They can put four feet, they can put their tent out at the end of the 14 feet and have four feet. There's probably no other art show that lets them do what we have let them do. This is a rude awakening for them to stay in the spot that they pay for.
And then just one other thing, because I know I had seen this in the paper too. I was just, and maybe I missed it, but I wasn't aware that we had established rules of use for the new median. I mean, when you say you won't be able to use the grassy area, I, I didn't recall that coming up in a...
From what I was told, there will be fences up for the art show, because the...
For this one?
For the art shows in the future, because the artists trash the median. This is what I was told.
That there will be fences in subsequent...
Yes, ma'am. Might not be the chain link, but there will be fences.
See? I thought we might want to talk about that at some point in time. I mean, if we're going to have rules for the median, that we might want to discuss what those rules are going to be.
I would love to see that changed, but that's what I'm going on at this point.
Thank you.
Can I just have a question? Have we worked out the grass, because now the sod's going to be put down as far as watering it?
We were told it's supposed to be 23rd, and when the, during the event, will the water be turned off?
Okay, so now going to water a little before or during the night or anything like that?
Not during the event, no.
Okay.
Not unless you want to buy a lot of art.
I'm not going to buy a lot of art. Okay. Any other questions for either mayors?
I have a motion.
Okay, I have a motion then.
Okay, motion to approve the special event application and cosponsorship.
Mayor, second.
All right, and there were no speaker cards for this item?
No, Mayor.
All right then, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six-zero?
Okay.
Thank you for your support.
You mayors?
Thank you for your support, and we'll be back if you ever need us.
Okay. Number 11, discussion impossible direction to staff regarding the Wall That Heals replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial coming to Fountain Hills February 18th through the 22nd, 2015. Discussion with consideration of town cosponsorship fees and placement of the wall. This item was added at the request of council members Brown, Elke, and LaGaye. And Ken, are you going to start, or?
Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Elke's going to start.
Thank you. I think, if we may, Mayor, we have the first vice, Senior Vice Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7507, Carl Krauchek, here, and he has a presentation to give to the council briefly about the Healing Wall. If we could have him come up and do that presentation.
Absolutely, Carl. On up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed program to you. I'm Carl Krauchek, Senior Vice Commander of Veteran of Foreign Wars Post 7507. I'm also the Chairman for the 50th Vietnam Commemorative put out by the Department of Defense. Here with me is Debbie Yen. She is the Women's in Partnership President, and she's here to help address any questions that council might have. We're here to propose a Vietnam War Commemorative program to be held at the Fountain Park in February of 2015. As a 50th anniversary of Vietnam War Commemorative partner, we have been approved to receive the Wall That Heals Vietnam Veterans Traveling Wall and Museum. To host this exhibit is an honor to the town, to the VFW... To host this exhibit is an honor to the town, to the VFW, and to the citizens of Fountain Hills. As we plan for this event, we'll focus on making this a Fountain Hills event by including community members, organizations, schoolchildren, in all of our ceremonies, in volunteer positions as escorts for the wall, in security and fundraising programs, in hosting a special event, and in reading the names of the Arizonans who died during the conflict, to name a few. As we present this program, here's what we would like you to take under consideration. Consideration of a town cosponsorship fees and placement of the wall. The Secretary of the Department of Defense has authorized the United States of America Vietnam War Commemorative Program. The objectives of this program are to, one, thank and honor those veterans of the Vietnam War, to include those that were held as prisoners of war or listing as missing in action, as well as thank and honor the families of those veterans. Two, to highlight the services of the armed forces during the Vietnam War. Three, to pay tribute to the contributions made on the home front by the people of the United States during that war. Four, to highlight advances in technology, science, and medicine related to military research during the war. Five, to recognize the contributions and sacrifices made by the Allies of the United States during the Vietnam War. The guidelines for these events should meet one of the five congressionally mandated objectives each year for a three-year period. The first event that we're proposing in two thousand and fifteen is to have the Wall That Heals Traveling Vietnam Veterans Memorial and Museum that was created by the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund. By bringing the wall home to communities throughout our country, it allows the souls enshrined on the memorial to exist once more among family and friends in the peace and comfort of familiar surroundings. The traveling exhibit known as the Wall That Heals allows the many thousands of veterans who have been unable to cope with the prospect of facing the wall to find the strength and courage to do so within their own communities, thus allowing the healing process to begin. We applied for the wall to be in Fountain Hills for several reasons. We saw a partnership with the town of Fountain Hills that would be an additional local and national exposure for our town due to our unique location as well as our community. We take great pride on being accepted. The Vietnam's Veteran Memorial Fund grants their approval to less than twenty locations across the United States per year. Due to our location and our community, and the willingness to work with the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post seventy-five oh seven, we were selected as one of those few. The Wall That Heals is a half-sized replica of the Vietnam Veterans Wall in Washington, D.C., complete with all fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-nine names of those men and women who were killed in service or missing in action while serving their country during the Vietnam War. We chose the dates of February eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen in conjunction with the art fair weekend. These dates were chosen for a few reasons. We wanted that additional exposure for the town, additional exposure for the art fair, as well as recognition and revenue for the town and our VFW post. Imagine the recognition for our Vietnam veterans. If anyone has had the experience of visiting the wall in Washington, you might remember the feelings and emotions that the wall conveys. This also includes a traveling museum and information center. That center tells the story of the Vietnam War era, the wall, and a mobile representation of the education center at the wall that was built. Visitors will be encouraged to bring photos of loved ones or friends on the wall to the information center. Information cases display photos of service members whose names are found on the wall, along with letters and memorabilia left at the wall in Washington. Museum also includes a map of Vietnam and a chronological overview of the conflict in Vietnam. A key element to the success of the Healing Wall is that we are given specific parameters and guidelines. If you just look at the notations that you were given before, the replica is two hundred and fifty feet by sixty feet and must be placed on level ground. The traveling museum and information center is seventy feet by forty feet and also must be placed on level ground. We have met with Ken Buchanan and Rachel Goodwin and discussed locations. Our initial thoughts were to be on the east end of the park, off Panorama Drive, including the parking lot. However, Mr. Buchanan has concerns regarding the two hundred and twenty volts that is required. Mr. Buchanan, would you please speak on that and make a comment, please?
Mayor, members of the council, we, Rachel and I, as well as the park superintendent, went over and looked at it today. There are going to be some challenges to find that, because the closest power source is about three to four hundred feet away for that. Probably, could be doable, but that's an awful long length for a two-twenty circuit, and then a one-ten is going to be needed for the uplights on the display itself. So, there's going to be some challenges on that, but that, that's the best site to use as recommended.
Thank you. The critical requirements of hosting organizations are, the site must be free and open to the public twenty-four hours per day. We must secure a volunteer pool to help the visitors. There will be two site managers from the Vietnam Memorial Fund, which will be with the wall, and they are there all during the day. We must arrange events around the Wall That Heals visit. We must promote the event through our community. The hosts will provide a five thousand dollar honorarium and a per diem for the two site managers who accompany the wall. Even though we will try fundraising by approaching the chamber, local businesses, for example, Home Depot, Lowe's, SRP, so on, we would appreciate any considerations that the town might provide regarding the honorarium. And the final page of your packet is a sample agenda that was the venue for the Williamsburg, Virginia event. We would pursue notable speakers such as Senator John McCain, Brigadier General Bud Farrington, and others. We're also promoting Patriots Pen for grades six through eight and the Voice of Democracy grades nine through twelve, through our local schools. This essay contest encourages young minds to examine American history, along with their own experiences in modern American society, by drafting a three hundred to four hundred word essay expressing their views based on a patriotic theme. We would encourage those students to attend and read the names of those Arizonans that gave their ultimate sacrifice to their country. We will be forming a subcommittee that will consist of not only members of our post, but members of our community. I want to thank the council for allowing us to make this presentation for your consideration. Are there any questions that you might have for us?
This is certainly an incredible honor to have this wall here, especially for our generation. A lot of our friends, people we know, are on that wall. And I know it was a big coup. You worked very hard to make this possible. So, I, I guess there's logistics and expenses that we probably need to talk about. Do we have any idea of a total cost of?
Not at this time, no.
Not at, not at this time. Councilman Elke?
Mr. Kraszek, thank you very much for the presentation. The five thousand dollar honorarium that needs to go, if, knowing the town's budget as we do, there's always some difficulties there. If the town was not able to contribute financially towards this, but was able to do a cosponsorship and waive normal fees, would, I assume, the post, the American Legion, and other veterans organizations would make those contributions for that? Is that correct?
Absolutely, along with fundraising activities.
Okay. And as far as manpower from the town, you're going to be seeking volunteers to watch over the memorial at night or other hours where it needs, won't be reliant on staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, as far as, Debbie, why don't you, why don't you come up? Debbie?
There is a group, one of many, but one is called the Patriot Guards, and I don't know if you might have seen them at funerals and so forth, and they may be a great resource for us. In addition, we have veterans motorcycle groups that may want to also participate in that, other veterans. I know a few veterans that actually do night patrols still to this day, so they may be a perfect, they do it in their own community, so they may be a perfect resource for us as well.
Okay. I'm sure that we won't be short of volunteers here for something like this. We usually have volunteers for even simple events, and this is something so, so big for us that I don't think that would be a problem. Plus, we have the marketing and that's in place right now, that, that's another thing that we can offer. Any questions? Yes, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Carl, do you have any idea the history of how many people might, might come over a four-day period? Have you seen any data on that at all?
I have not. Debbie, have you seen anything?
I know in the city of Chicago, and it might have been on an outskirts city there, but they had about ten, five, no, ten thousand to twenty thousand that came. We were thinking about that because we thought, geez, maybe we could do some off-site parking and have some buses transport. I know that the Fountain View Village has some buses, and they may be willing to donate that, and then we could transport people maybe from the high school parking lot or some other venue that we could use maybe over by Target or something. So, we'll look into that and see if, you know, do some research and see if we need something like that to. Many of our ceremonies will be hopefully in the evening, except for the opening ceremony, which would be Thursday morning, and that would be before the art fair.
Okay. Any other?
I'd just have to say, what an honor to have the wall come to Fountain Hills. That's super. Thank you.
As a Vietnam veteran, I actually was getting goosebumps just making the presentation to y'all.
Right. And also, there's a lot of the hotels that have their own vans. They might be able to donate also. Any other questions?
Just, and just a couple of housekeeping matters, just for purposes of the town then, as far as you're looking for cosponsorship, you're going to work out the logistics of the organization. You're just basically obviously looking for town support of this project so that you can report it to the organization, correct?
That is correct.
And one other thing, Mr. Kraszek, your VFW Post seventy-five oh seven is a 501(c)19, is that correct?
That is correct. There should be a copy of our IRS declaration in the packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor, I have a motion if nobody else has questions.
Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
All right, then go right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve a cosponsorship with VFW Post seventy-five oh seven to bring the Wall That Heals to Fountain Hills, February eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Mayor six-zero.
All right. Thank you, Carl and Debbie.
Thank you so much.
Coming up. All right. Item number twelve. One staff report for items twelve and thirteen. Opening the public hearing, sorry, to receive comments on ordinance fourteen dash oh eight, amending the town of Fountain Hills subdivision ordinance by modifying the grading and hillside disturbance requirements. Bob? Hi, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council? Planning and zoning commission formed a subcommittee on February twenty-seventh with the purpose of reviewing the hillside disturbance ordinances and the way the disturbance envelopes are calculated. That subcommittee reported its findings and recommendations back to the commission in July twenty-fourth. In their report, they made six recommendations for revising the hillside protection ordinance section standards in order to simplify the calculation process, as well as to allow for a greater degree of flexibility during hillside lot design and development. Planning and zoning commission accepted that report and directed staff to initiate this amendment process. On September twenty-fifth, planning and zoning commission held their public hearing on ordinance fourteen oh eight, which was drafted to reflect those six recommendations and contains the following changes. First, it will allow a twenty-foot-wide driveway path exemption between the front property line and the garage door, carport, or front of the house, whichever comes first. This is new to the ordinance. There are some other developments in town that have that type of exemption in their declarations or in their approvals. However, it wasn't ever in the ordinance, it was in development agreement, things like that. So, this would actually put something, make it the same for everybody across town. The second would be to allow for a ten-foot-wide utility trench exemption, subject to written confirmation of the requirement from the utility that the trench can't, must be outside the driveway exemption, and it's, and we would also then require that that trench be revegetated, revegetated once it was done. The current ordinance allows for this exemption, but only in the rear of a residential lot when the utilities have to go across country. This would also allow it to come maybe across the front if it was absolutely necessary for whatever reason. The third would be the slopes shall be considered hillside slopes if they are twenty percent or greater. Current ordinance calls out ten percent and above slopes as hillside slopes. So, this raises that a little bit, up to twenty percent. The fourth, up to forty percent of the areas that were identified as hillside slope areas on a residential lot may be disturbed. This is new to the ordinance as well. Currently, there's a graduated scale based on the steepness of the areas, with a maximum of thirty percent disturbable, down, all the way down to only ten percent being disturbable. This would be a flat, forty percent of the area, of the hillside area could be disturbed. Number five, commercially and industrially zoned properties should be exempt from the hillside disturbance ordinances. It just, it's very difficult to establish a commercial property having to step it down a hillside. You really need a flat pad, you need someplace to work, and, and the majority of the commercial properties are similar to what we saw in the tractor supply, where there's a little lump of something that might be hillside, but really wasn't. And last, residential lots that are zoned, R-one-six, R-one-eight, R-one-ten, the small zoning lots, anything less than ten thousand square feet, would be exempt as well. They would be a hundred percent disturbable, and this is new to the ordinance. And this is mainly because most of those lots that are that size are either in the old parts of town, or they back up to golf course, and they have open space around them already. Planning and zoning commission voted to recommend these approvals to you and, or these, this proposal, and staff also recommends that you approve ordinance fourteen oh eight as presented. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Bob. I'll open this up to council discussion. Anything on this side? Questions? You have a speaker card. Oh, okay. And we'll go to the speaker card.
We have two cards, Mayor. First speaker is Ed Key.
Good evening, members of the council. Ed Key, Aganville, Fountain Hills, twenty years. People chose to live and visit our town because it's, of its natural beauty, and that is the hills of Fountain Hills. Our hillside ordinance, reasonable and straightforward, has served us well over many years in protecting this asset from the wholesale scarring of the slopes through construction, often seen in other communities. The proposed revisions of the ordinance that you have before you, admittedly by its authors, loosen the code significantly in my view. They redefine the definition of slope to twenty percent and result in increased permitted disturbance and higher up the hillside. They increase the disturbance area to forty percent of the lot, meaning more land subject to disturbance. They exempt R-one-six through R-one-ten from the ordinance, resulting in one hundred percent uncontrolled disturbance. And finally, they exempt commercial and industrial property from the ordinance, again resulting in uncontrolled disturbance. I'm here because I'm wary of this proposal and its potential negative impact upon the beauty of our community. You know, simplifying doesn't mean necessarily weakening an ordinance. So, I urge you not to fast-track this tonight. Further time for study never hurts, and the fact is, the current ordinance is working. I refer you to an old adage which I found workable in my own life. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ed?
And the second speaker, Mayor, is Jeanne McEliezik.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jeanne McEliezik. I'm a resident of Fountain Hills. I just had a question, reading the ordinance about its applicability to existing lots that had been laid out. For example, my wife and I own a lot in a planned subdivision. When we bought our lot, it was, all the lots in the subdivision were laid out, and the developer put in building envelopes on those lots, consistent with the existing town code. My question is, and I've read the ordinance or the proposed changes, and I think I know the answer, but I don't trust my judgment on this since I didn't write it, is if my wife and I decide to develop this piece of property, are we subject to the new regulations, the, the hillside disturbance regulations, or are we subject to the building envelope that has been laid out or was laid out when we bought the property by the developer under the old regulations? And that was the only question I had, and I thank you very much.
Right. Yeah, good question. Okay. Bob, can you possibly answer that without?
Madam Mayor, I think I'll take this one.
Okay, yeah.
The, the simple answer is that the property will be subject-
The, the simple answer is that the property will be subject to the new regulations, but it will require a replat in most instances where there is either a platted envelope or in some subdivisions, there's a platted table of disturbance allowable to each lot.
What about areas like Fire Rock, and they have their own, isn't that different, though, that they wouldn't be affected?
Madam Mayor, the, the reason why many of the lots in Fire Rock would be affected or unaffected would be the, the plat itself. In Eagles Nest, I believe, is one of our good examples of where they're actually building envelopes plated on each individual lot. So if someone were to replat an individual lot, they can modify it to the code that's applicable at that time. Fire Rock is a little different when the ones that are plated with the table on the first page. The table is what actually has to be subject to the replat, and that's a little more challenging.
Okay.
There are also a number of lots that were developed that have already recorded their hillside protection easements, so those are, that's another hurdle for an existing property would have to revise those hillside easements as well.
Okay, well, I'm sure that you could, you could help the resident determine how this affects his lot. I'm sure he can stop by and visit you.
Find out how badly he off he is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and you can do that. Okay, thanks, Bob. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, but just for the record, Bob, this, of course, doesn't change any existing plot or building envelope. If you're satisfied with what you have, you can just continue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, if I, if I may, thank you. Bob, you know, we know that HOAs are oftentimes more restrictive than town codes, ordinance, subdivision ordinances. So how, how does that come into play? For example, there may be an HOA where there's a building envelope and basically defines where the home can be built without any disturbance outside of that particular building envelope. How would that interchange with what we're looking at here? Would the HOA rule, or would this, help me out with that?
I've seen some of those where the HOAs have created those recommended envelopes, but those aren't anything binding. I mean, they have to follow our ordinance. They can't over, over, I guess, block us.
I don't know about that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's, it's actually twofold for those property owners. They may be able to avail themselves of the ordinance legally under the town's regulations, but not under the private covenant they have that they signed when they bought their lot.
Absolutely. I mean, for example, Mayor, I mean, for example, a committee of architecture, someone may come with, you know, plans to build outside the envelope, but it's my understanding that the committee of architecture and that HOA would have to approve that and supersede the town.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Legay, I don't know that I would ever refer to it as superseding. It is just a different level of hurdle or roadblock.
Let me use another word. It's very possible that a committee of architecture may not approve those plans for that resident because disturbance is outside the building envelope. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, so I think that's important because there are a lot of HOAs out there that are more restrictive and, in fact, may not be impacted by what we're, what we're looking at here. Thank you.
Most times, we will ask if, when somebody comes in with a development for a house, "Do you have an HOA?" Because you may have to get their approval as well.
I understand. Thank you.
Councilman Hanson?
And if there was any overlap with development agreements that might be in place, how would that play out?
Notwithstanding the potential conflict on that one, we'll, I'll answer it broadly.
That's all I see.
The, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, we're going to have to just do those on a case-by-case basis, because in most instances, that would affect the total disturbance amount is really where the development agreement handled it, and I don't know that this would modify that to any extent that would make a difference. We'd have to look and see if recalculating for the vacant lot's still available, if they could, if it would change that disturbance amount. We'll have to come back to you and talk to the council about modifying the agreement to match that, if that's your desire. But we really won't know on a one-size-fits-all kind of basis.
Until we read it.
And...
Anything else? Can I see? Something else?
And when the committee was meeting, was there, and I don't know if this would play into, but it was the, the same section in the subdivision ordinance, did discussion come up about cut and fill?
No, we were just strictly looking at the disturbance envelopes in those ordinances, not cut and fill.
Okay.
I just had a question about number six. Could you explain why, number six, why those particularly zoned sections were, are going to be exempt? We talked about this, but I just thought you might like to explain that.
The main reason for the small lot exemption, it was brought up, the, anything with 10,000 square feet or less is already a small lot in town. Putting a large or even a medium-sized house on it and getting a decent yard, driveway, maybe a garage or whatever in the back, a pool, you've used up 90% of the lot that way. Creating or having them to also then have to go through any hillside requirements for even narrowing, making that smaller, just makes them have a smaller house, less, less desirable lots, and it doesn't really serve a purpose in those dense neighborhoods.
Do you think we have a lot of lots like that, or did you?
There are a lot of lots in those zones, and there, a number of them actually back up to the golf courses, like I said. So there, there's a lot of them in the hillside areas, but they're so small that in order to get a decent-sized house on them, you really have to allow them to, to use the whole lot.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to go through all six of the items briefly, make some comments on them. I would like to give you the reasons that I proposed changing this, and then I've got some thoughts that I would like to bring up, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The driveway exemption is, in my opinion, one of the, one of the best parts of this change. And when we laid out the subdivisions and platted everything, all like Fire Rock and Eagles Nest and all, the, the driveways take up a large portion of the lump sum of the disturbable space. And some of the driveways that we're going to be seeing on some of the, the last lots to be built on in Fire Rock, which are extremely difficult lots, will require some, some extremely detailed driveways to get up and into them. And we've had conversations as to whether that was going to be able to be changed or not. That's yet to be seen, and I understand that. The 10-foot utilities exemption is, is plays, comes into play because right now, currently, we take all of the utilities down the driveway, and if your power comes in on the opposite corner of the lot, you have to trench all the way across the face of the lot and then up the driveway, and many times, it is further from the corner of the lot to the driveway than it is from the utility connection to the house. So we're actually tearing up more natural landscape than what it would be if we could go into a straight line. And the only thing I would like to add to your, to the clause is, and I would like to add, in the trench, in, when the open trench area must have a revegetated plan submitted with and be part of the approved landscape drawing. I would like to have the same, I would like to see the same authority taken over the re-vedge of the, of the open trench or the, the 10-foot-wide utility easement as I would the detail that is given to our landscape, approved landscape drawings. And the most important, right now, you see that we, if you have a 10% slope, you can, you can disturb a portion of it, and if it's 10 to 20, you can only disturb 30% of your lot. And being in the industry quite a while, I have, I have quite a bit to say about this because I, I believe that if you're going to buy a lot and it's three acres and they give you 12,000 feet to build on, I, I struggle saying that I have to pay tax on everything that you won't admit, won't let me use on my own lot that I've paid for. You know, I, I struggle with that, and I think it's way too restrictive. I think it is taking of property, and I think forever, from the first time I read the ordinance, it's incorrect. And what we, what we're coming up with today with greater than 20, up to 40% disturbance is almost verbatim to what every community around us is, is utilizing. So it's, it's not a, it's not something that we just threw up in the air and threw darts at. It is a, it is a rather recommended dimension and percentage that is used around the valley. The commercial and industrial exemption, that sounds, oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, but you've got to remember that we have architectural guidelines for commercial now, and we also require all the landscape drawings, just like we do on the residential. So at the end of the day, you're going to have a commercial property that's going to be nicely landscaped, just as all of our commercial properties are, no foul, no harm. And the same with the, the small lots. Right now, I can drive you by several lots over on the, behind Safeway and, I can't say the name of the street, that are truly non-buildable, non-buildable at all, and they're duplex lots because they're, they're sloped. And if, if we, if we don't do something about that, those lots will sit there with no value, and I don't feel like that that is fair to the people that bought the lots to build on. We need, we need to address them, and so this, this change does address it. And of course, the reasons I'm asking for these changes is firstly and foremost, it makes Fountain Hills a more business-friendly community, because currently, if, if Fountain Hills takes a rub on about any major subject, it is how difficult it is to come to Fountain Hills, get a permit, and build. And of course, we're carrying the, the burden, clear from back in the, the late 70s, early 80s, when the town was just starting, it was difficult. And, and I have to thank staff for working hard because Fountain Hills has become an extremely builder-friendly town, all the way down to this hillside ordinance that is currently in place. You talk to the engineers around the valley, including the local engineers that are, that have worked with this now since 99, that live and work right here in Fountain Hills, and they will all tell you, it is almost impossible to understand what we're supposed to do and how we're supposed to do it. And, and this is after almost 20 years of use. And so it is making it more engineering-friendly, which makes us more business-friendly, which goes a long ways toward bringing people into this town. And lastly, to help the, the lot buyers, the people that are out trying to buy a lot, that are looking at the ordinance saying, oh, my gosh, if it's 10%, we can disturb this much, and, and if it's 20%, we can't even disturb 30% of it. And, I mean, it's just, it is mind-boggling to try to stand on a lot and explain to somebody that's wanting to move to town and build a home what they can build, unless you have an engineer involved. Now, here are my thoughts. Do we need, now, these are my personal thoughts, and I know that, I know that we're going, we're going to keep this ordinance, but I don't feel like we even need this ordinance. More than half of the homes in Fountain Hills that are currently here were built before 1999, and you can drive down any street in Fountain Hills, and I, you can go down any street in Fountain Hills, and I will defy you to find one street that isn't absolutely gorgeous. Fountain Hills is a naturally beautiful town all by itself, and I don't believe the town should be trying to push an ordinance to make it any more beautiful because we can't. So the people that buy in Fountain Hills are going to continue to re-vedge their lots, they're going to continue to make their homes beautiful, and they're going to continue to make the landscaping beautiful without the town telling them they have to do it. And with that said, I would make a motion.
Thank you. All right, well, I'm going to, no more speaker cards? Any more discussion? I'll go.
Mayor, just a question, if I may. Maybe more of a comment than a question, so Councilman Brown, please chime in, or Bob, chime in. You know, some of the comments that I've received from residents, and we've heard that from our speaker this evening, that it is a little disconcerting when, when you look at item number five and number six. It says exemptions. But I think where I feel a little more comfortable after this discussion is, is kind of what I've heard. When you look at just exemptions for items five and number six, which is commercial and the smaller lots, what first comes to mind is that there's no protection, but environmentally, and I'm talking specifically environmentally. And I think this discussion has helped me with that, because cut and fill is still, comes into play, particularly in an industrial environment. Knowing the town as well as I do, having lived here for a bit, there aren't many commercial lots that are in Fountain Hills that are actually on hillsides. I mean, what's remaining is, is pretty flat. So as protections, you have cut and fill, you have re-vegging, which Councilman Brown just mentioned, and also some time ago, council passed an ordinance to protect sorrel cactuses. And I think that's what concerns people, that even if it's a small lot, it may have sorrel cactuses in there, someone's going to go and level that. So I'm a bit more comfortable after this discussion with five and six than I was coming in, because there are some, some protections. So, thank you.
If there's nothing else, then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of ordinance 14-08, as just discussed. If there's no other discussion, then I'll get a motion.
If I may, move that the town council vote to approve ordinance 14-08, a proposed text amendment to the Fountain Hills subdivision ordinance revising the hillside protection standards in order to allow a greater degree of flexibility during the hillside lot design and development. And the addition to the 10-foot utility trench exemption, I would like to have, after trench area must have a revegetation plan submitted with and be part of the approved landscape drawings.
Mayor, second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Okay, and I know that, Councilman Brown, you were on the committee for this. You did a lot of work on it, so thank you very much for all the time that you put into this. All right, number 14 is discussion with possible direction to staff about legislative bulletin. Do we have anything in the legislature?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, any further council discussion or anything from the manager? No. Anybody else want to say anything else under number 16? No, okay. I just want to thank Bev and Shana for my lovely bossy flowers. That was such a great surprise. Thank you very much. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.